Wow, that sounded celestial. Magic, all of them. Transcending. All right, everybody, get to your seats. Wow, it got hushed all of a sudden. Can you hear me? Okay, welcome everyone to the second and final Longmont area Democrats Candidate Forum in the 2025 election. My name is Marissa and I do the media and communications for Longmont area Democrats. How many of you here in the room were at our last candidate forum in September? Thank you for coming again. Some of this will be familiar to you. Okay, so that was where we heard from three at the time, or two candidates for Longmont City Council, and six, count them, six at-large candidates, all vying for seats on Longmont City Council. Well, a lot can happen in 43 days. Meg Thornberry withdrew from the War II race on September 8th. That's big-picture thinking from a candidate, I think, so I hope we hear from Meg again, perhaps in future elections. On September 15th, we know, or at least the vote nerds in the room know, that the sample ballot is posted. I'm talking about myself there. And ballots start mailing to voters tomorrow. Tonight, our forum will have two segments, the first of which is candidates running for two of the four seats open on the St. Brain Valley School District Board. I went to all St. Brain District schools growing up in Longmont. My elementary school was Hygiene Elementary and I'm old, so I went there actually before it became what was called an open-space school. But I, along with all the other farm kids that rode the bus in, loved the former, and also very old, creaky building, the playground that seemed to stretch for miles to the south, and we loved the ancient, quote-unquote, teachers that taught there, like Mrs. Maruka, Mrs. Rosengrant, all of it forming a love of learning in me that I still have to this day. And we all know that public education is a critical bedrock of our democracy. Hold your applause, we're kind of keeping on task here. The St. Brain Valley School District race has four seats on the ballot, districts B, D, E, and F. All voters in the St. Brain District, which Longmont is a part of, vote for all district seats. Tonight, we have Hadley Solomon running for the District B seat. The other candidate on your ballot for District B, Peggy Kelly, is not here because of a scheduling conflict. And we have the two candidates running for District D seat, Miosha Babbs, the incumbent, and John Arons. Also, very important, we ask that all candidates, once called for a question, stand up and answer, so folks in the back of the room can see you. If we keep things moving, we'll be done in about 45 minutes for this first segment of our forum. Then we'll take about 10 minutes, bathroom breaks, et cetera. And for the next segment, the four Longmont City Council mayoral candidates will come up and be seated. Two of the mayoral candidates serve on council now, Diane Christ and Suzie Padago Faring. One candidate, Sarah Levison, served on council previously. And a new mayoral candidate, Shaquille Delal, is also with us tonight, will be when they come here. Let's put a shout-out to Sergio and Akbar from Longmont Public Media for setting us up technically, for providing the live stream and critical access for this important event when there's so much stress around elections. So thank you for being so great to work with. Candidates, you heard from Virginia, our president, with calls and emails about all of you presenting tonight. Thank you, Virginia, for all the work you put into leading up to tonight. Send some good, smooth surgery rehab vibes to Ingrid, LED's vice president, likely watching the live stream at home, and deep gratitude and love to the rest of the LED board for feeling the enormous amount of questions submitted by Longmont residents, even from our last forum, with many hours crafting the very best questions for tonight. You'll see that the handy info sheets that are on your chairs was on most of, you know, on most of the chairs. This time, it's two-sided, with info from our first forum on one side and helpful information for tonight's forum on the other. Info not only about the election and finding out what ward you live in, but all the candidates' websites, so that you can contact all of them yourself to ask any questions that were not asked this evening. Where websites were not available, I provided QR codes leading to or contact emails for candidates. Again, if you have a question or issue not covered tonight, please reach out to candidates directly. I'm sure they'll welcome the interchange. I'd also encourage you to share what you learned from candidates' answers with friends and family that are interested in this election. Next, and speaking of keeping on task, once again, many thanks to Annie Coleman, who will be our timekeeper this evening. Candidates, make sure you've got a sideline to Annie. She'll pull the hook or whatever. When giving your remarks, she'll let you know when you're close to your limit. Now, to the audience, thank you for being here, participating in our democracy at the local level. This next part will be familiar to many of you, fully understanding the passion of a politically active crowd. Please keep outbursts under your breath if you can. Interruptions only take up more time, and we must stay on task. Thank you. Last time, I kind of screwed up by not stepping back up here at the end with closing remarks, but I promised to stay on task myself with a few important announcements at the end of tonight's two segments, so you'll want to stay for just a few minutes longer, exactly three minutes. Thank you, everyone. Onto our moderator for this evening, Nicolette Tussain, a retired reporter, columnist, and magazine editor, and a native of Colorado, being a journalism graduate of CU Boulder, a working career at various communication jobs in Chicago and San Francisco, moving back to Carbondale, Indiana, Aspen until 2022, when health concerns prompted her to move to Longmont. While well-versed in Colorado politics, she's a relative and welcome newcomer to Longmont and Boulder County. Thanks, Nicolette, so take it away.
Can you hear me? Yes. Okay, that tells me that this is my microphone. Yeah, it's mic to... You couldn't hear me? No, it's a mic to... That's why I wanted my ass... It might be up if they were trying to... It might be a little low in battery. That was why I asked. Good evening. We will offer candidates the opportunity to speak freely for three minutes in opening and closing remarks, and we have Annie here at the side table, who will let you know when your time is running out and when it's done. When 30 seconds are left, she's going to hold up this yellow card here, and if you are still talking when the time is up, she will hold up a red stop sign. At that time, you need to finish your sentence so that all candidates will have equal time to speak. We do ask candidates to stand when you speak, and I will give you this microphone to pass along, and that's so they can see you in the back of the room and you're on TV. When time comes for the question-and-answer segment, each candidate will have three minutes to answer each question, and our timekeeper will do the yellow 30-second warning and the red stop sign. We will do our best to ask as many questions as we can in the timeframe we have. We have a full schedule, so we ask that you don't respond to the candidates, but mostly because, not for lack of interest in what you're saying, just because we're trying to stay on time. Some of the candidates have left literature on a table outside the door to this room. Please feel free to take it, so you have it to follow up if you have additional questions for the candidates that don't get answered tonight. There is also that flyer that Marissa told you about. Marissa also pretty much told you what the setup is for who's running, but we have here tonight Hadley Solomon, who is running for District B. For District D, we have Miosha Babbs, the incumbent, and John Arons running for that seat. All St. Brain Valley School District voters will vote for candidates in districts B, D, E, and F. So, we are ready for questions, and what I'm going to do is alternate who gets the first question, so... One and a half minutes. Okay. I ran it right into this room. Okay, one and a half minutes. First question. You're going to get it first, Hadley. Oh, yes, you're quite right.
Hi, my name is Hadley Solomon. I am running for the St. Brain Valley School District, for District B. I have lived in the area, in Niwot specifically, since 2008, so it's been 17 years, and 16 of those have been spent with kids in the schools. I have four children who have been through all of the theater schools in the Niwot area, Niwot Elementary, Sunset, and Niwot High School. And through that time, while having a professional career, I have also volunteered in the schools. So I have been in the classroom and have led the parent organizations at each of the schools, serving on the Head Foundation as the online auction chair at Niwot High School specifically, but president of the other two. And I also was president of Grassroots St. Brain, which was a nonprofit that worked to educate the community on how Colorado funds schools, so that people can make informed decisions about how they vote on the levies and bonds, et cetera. There are four pillars of my campaign that I'm focusing on. They're academic excellence and continuing the record that St. Brain Valley Schools has had in that department and continuing to improve on that. Safety and making sure that schools are secure, and also where every child is seen and valued and honored as they are. Third is making sure that we continue to provide multiple pathways of opportunity in our very diverse district. And the fourth is being a very strong fiscal overseer of the budget, as the role on the board requires. We would pass the budget, making sure that I have an open door and can be a conduit to the community to make sure that everyone understands how schools are being funded, how the district is using those funds, and continue to earn the trust and maintain the trust of the community in the schools. The reason I'm running is because I believe that schools truly are the foundation of our society. I believe that schools can really change the trajectory of students' lives. I want to make sure that our schools are equipped to deliver a world-class education for every student in this district. I'm also running because I love the way that schools anchor our communities, and that's another area where maintaining that trust with the community and the schools is so important. For our family, our closest friends, our entire social network has been built out of our connection to the school, but it's also been the connection for the larger Niwot community. So I think it's important to, again, maintain those connections and provide that world-class education to every student in our district. Thank you.
Hi, can I just say, "Ditto"? My name is John Arons, and I have the honor of running for the board again. I served for eight years. I thoroughly enjoyed it and learned quite a bit when I was on the board, and I found out that I could come back, and I chose to. I love this district, I love the schools. I thought it was extremely interesting to hear the moderator open up with the fact that she praised her teachers and the community, and I think every one of us can in our minds eye remember a teacher, remember a class, remember a subject, remember a sport that really kind of built your character. And I think that's what we're talking about while we're talking about schools, is building a character, having the students aligned with education, becoming lifelong learners, and being productive in our society. I cannot tell you how that pathway is so important to St. Brain. We have incredible administrators, amazing teachers, and now with the shortage that seemingly is going around in a lot of the other rural districts, and I feel sorry for their hardship, we have found that St. Brain, because of its flagship moments in terms of understanding what teachers' needs are and what students' needs are, we're finding out two things. One, we're getting teachers from all around the state and even around the country that are coming to St. Brain because they hear how open and how transparent it is to the students and to the teachers. We're also finding out that students are doing the exact same thing. We have more students open rolling into St. Brain because of those opportunities, and those opportunities are immense. I mean, it's not just the core subjects that students are getting, but they're getting certification from IBM and from Apple. We have programs that are allowing students to learn about teaching. We have programs that are allowing students to learn about med and EMT, and it's incredible. They do work right here in this college. So we have those opportunities where we really give our students a broad approach as to how they can facilitate their futures. That's what I'm doing, and that's why I'm on the board, and that's why I'm here. I love the fact that we have the opportunity to work with the community, with businesses. That's what I did in the past, that's what I continue to focus on. I like to approach things with a blank slate and kind of absorb everything that I need to talk by students, teachers, and the community. So I appreciate you all coming, and I appreciate your votes. Thank you very much.
Good evening. I want to thank you first and foremost for being here, taking the time out to be here tonight, and taking the time out of your day and your schedules. It is an honor to serve, first and foremost. For most of my life, actually all of my life, I'll say, outside of being a little child when you just play, I've served. I've served my community in many capacities. My name is Miosha Babbs, and I'm honored to be here and I'm honored to serve you in this community. My background, I've been here in Erie as a resident for the last 16 years with my four children, and they've all gone through or are still in the St. Brain Valley School District. Two of them have since graduated, one most recently, and then the other two are in high school, in our middle school there in Erie. I first came here on a pilgrimage to USA for 18 months, and then after coming here, as most people do, we are most transplants, I saw the mountains, saw the views, and I was hooked, and I've been here ever since. 18 months has now been 16, almost 17 years. And in that 16 years, my children have been in the St. Brain Valley School, and I've seen how the school, the school district has evolved, and how this school district has grown, and how this school district has served our students within the school district. I first want to talk a little bit about who I am. I have a background in computer engineering and physics as a major, and I'm currently an engineer at VAE Systems, formerly known as Ball Aerospace, too many people, in Grumford, Colorado. However, I do have also a little different background, because I also was once a secondary teacher, and I currently teach at a graduate level as well. So I know firsthand when it comes to what our teachers have done, what they need to do, and what they have gone through, and what they continue to go through. It's a little different, because when I was in teaching almost 20 years ago, it was, we still had some of the same things. We talked about shortages and what teachers can and can't do. But what I've seen here in St. Brain Valley School District since I've been here, I've seen how our teachers have been supported, how our teachers continue to grow, and how we really value our teachers and our students. One of the things that I know that many of the families have said here is the foundation of education. 90% of our students across this country are public schools, attend a public school. So 90% of the students who go to school attend a public school. Why is that so? Because public schools, as much as we hear differently in the news and what have you, public schools offer a valued education to our students. I want to make sure that the education that each of the students get is something that they can be proud of, something that they can value, and something they can take on, not only in their education now, but in their lives to continue to be lifelong learners, just as I have taken one. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate your vote in November. Thank you.
Okay, now we'll start the Q and A. Do you believe that all recipients of public education funding, including charter schools and voucher programs, should be required to comply with the same state standards, regulations, non-discrimination laws, and structural accountability as traditional public schools? Why or why not?
So, we have a number of charter schools in the district that do receive funding from state and from our local levies, a portion of that. And I do believe that with that, they should be required to adhere to Colorado state education standards. I believe that private schools are slightly different scenario. We don't have a voucher program in Colorado, and I don't believe that it is necessary or even justified to require an independently-run school to comply with that. That said, I do think that Colorado state standards are in the best interest of all students, and so I would hope that every educational opportunity that is offered to children in the state would be adhering to those standards.
Thank you. Yet core education is core education, and it should be across the board. But our issue is that we have charter schools, we have private schools, and we have our schools which are public schools, which really shouldn't be a difference in terms of educating our students, but there is a difference. The difference is that when you go to a charter school, they usually have something that they are attracting their students with, and that's something that is important to those parents. So we can't put constraints on that, but we can embrace it, and we have to embrace every student as a member and a citizen of our state. So that's important. The private schools, it's kind of a hands-off approach. We can't really do anything to say that they have to raise their standards. I think standards are extremely important to every school that's out there, but we have one job to really educate and prepare our students for life, and that's what I'm hoping every school does, when we have to embrace every student and every pupil that's in the school system. They are our own, so I don't say that we have to separate charter, private, and public. Every student should get an opportunity.
Thank you for the question, Mr. Nicolette. First and foremost, when we talk about educating our students, we're educating each and every student, so all students. And that involves a student that goes to a public school, a charter school, which some of them are public schools and some of them are private charter schools, and also the traditional private schools. When we think of our Colorado state standards for our children, we think of making sure that they meet a certain standard so that they can not only understand what they're learning, but also have a standard across the board, and that every child is getting that same valued education. Funding for those schools can be different. Some charter schools get monies from the districts in which they are part of, and some do not, dependent upon their affiliation. So when I think of, and as Hadley said, we don't have vouchers in this state, but when I think of making sure that our students have a good education, I think of the basics. Back in the day, they used to call it a reading, writing, and arithmetic, but it's the same thing, just in different terms. So your math, English language arts, and sciences. Mainly because those things don't go away. We need to learn how to read, we need our children to learn how to write, we need them to know how to add and subtract, or do a little bit higher-level math. So when it comes to funding those schools, I do believe that our public schools should be fully funded. I also think that it's very important that our children who do go to charter schools, if they so choose to do that, because here in Colorado, we offer them that school of choice. If they choose to do that, then we make sure that they have the valued standards that the Colorado Department of Education has set forth for our students to learn. Thank you.
Okay, we'll start this one with John. How will you protect and support students and their families who are now being threatened by federal ICE agents?
Wow, nothing like an easy question. I'm against ICE. I'm against attack on people without true qualification. I think we have to stand up for them. I think we have to protect our own, and every student that's in this district is our own. There's such a gray area, or it's really not such a gray area, I should say. When you're looking at citizenship and a pathway, that's the big question, is how do we get that done in a more expeditious manner? That's not a question for the schools, but I would thoroughly ask and demand that we have no raids in our schools, we have no raids at our sports games, we have no raids anywhere on our campus. I don't know if any board member can say how they're going to do it. It's going to have to come with what comes at us and how we deal with it, but I think every board member should be really clear that raids on our students is not going to happen or is not proper.
Thank you for that question. You know, when I think of our students and when they walk into our buildings, they should feel safe and they should feel secure. One of the pillars in my campaign here is security, and that stands for when they come to school that they can feel secure in any form or fashion. Our schools are not prisons, they're not detention centers, and I don't think that our, you know, people who are enforcing, and I understand that they're doing their jobs, but that are enforcing this, I think there needs to be a level of compassion as well. One of the things that I think we today as a society has lost is a level of compassion. There's a time and a place for everything, and sometimes that time and place is not in the school system. Just like when you think about, when you go to somewhere that's very sacred, sometimes we just need to have that space. And at this same moment, some of these students who walk into our doors, I remember as an educator, they say, "When a student walks through your door, you have to expect that that student is who they are when they walk through that door." You don't know what they've been through, you don't know where they're going, all you know is who they are when they walk through that door, and you treat them as such. So I think it is very detrimental to our students, to their mental health, to their emotional health, and definitely to their physical health, to come into the schools and just grab them out of the class. If they choose to do that, then we make sure that they have the valued standards that the Colorado Department of Education has set forth for our students to learn. Thank you.
Okay, we'll start this one with John. How will you protect and support students and their families who are now being threatened by federal ICE agents?
Wow, nothing like an easy question. I'm against ICE. I'm against attack on people without true qualification. I think we have to stand up for them. I think we have to protect our own and every student that's in this district is our own. There's such a gray area, or it's really not such a gray area, I should say. When you're looking at citizenship and a pathway, that's the big question is, is how do we get that done in a more expeditious manner? That's not a question for the schools, but I, I would thoroughly ask and demand that we have no raids in our schools, we have no raids at our sports games, we have no raids anywhere on our campus. I don't know if any board member can say how they're going to do it. It's going to have to come with what comes at us and how we deal with it, but I think every board member should be really clear that raids on our students is not going to happen or is not proper.
Thank you for that question. You know, when I think of our students and when they walk into our buildings, they should feel safe and they should feel secure. One of the pillars in, in my campaign here is security. And that stands for when they come to school, that they can feel secure in any form or fashion. Our schools are not prisons, they're not detention centers and I don't think that our, you know, people who are enforcing, and I understand that they're doing their jobs, but that are enforcing this, I think there needs to be a level of compassion as well. One of the things that I think we today as a society has lost is a level of compassion. There's a place, a time and a place for everything and sometimes that time and place is not in the school system. Just like when you think about, when you go to somewhere that's very sacred, sometimes we just need to have that space. And at this same moment, some of these students who walk into our doors, I remember as an educator, they say, "When a student walk through your door, you have to expect that that student is who they are when they walk through that door." You don't know what they've been through, you don't know where they, where they're going. All you know is who they are when they walk through that door and you treat them as such. So I think it is very detrimental to our students, to their mental health, to their emotional health and definitely to their physical health to, to come into the schools and just grab them out of the class, to, to do what some people feel is, is, is important for them to do at that moment in time. I think we need to take a step back and look at what our children need the most and that's safety and security. Thank you.
Oh, I still have to go, yeah, I'm sorry. So, one of the roles of the school board is to oversee the school's safety plan and do a review and audit of that on an annual or semi-annual basis. So I do think that, you know, the school board has an opportunity there to weigh in and advise and guide the district. I think that the district can also form strong partnerships with other local entities that revolve around security, whether that's police or, or others, fire departments, et cetera. And then lastly, I think that one of the key points about making kids feel safe in schools is making sure that educators and administrators are well-informed about what those rules are, what, what is allowed on a campus, what access something like ICE might have and really doesn't have, so that they can operate with confidence and project that to students so that they too feel safe. Because truly, when students feel safe, then they're able to learn. So I, I think that the board has a role there, but maybe not as directly as some of those other resources.
Okay, let's start this one with Yosha. How do you believe public schools should balance teaching accurate, standards-based information in subjects like history and social studies with responding to recent efforts to ban or restrict books?
So St. Grand Valley School District has, one of the first and foremost things that we do as a, as a board is set policy and governance. And that's our primary focus and goal for our students and to make sure that our students have all the resources that they need through a balanced budget and also through good teachers in the school. Our, our process for book banning or curriculum choice is thoroughly there in our policies. We have a very accurate and long policy process that will allow community members, parents, probably even students if they so chose to do that, to come in if they have a question about a book or the curriculum. One of the things that I say in, in all of my, my communication to people is that we are here to educate all students, to ensure that every student has what they need. That's not the same for every single student. We don't have a one-size-fits-all. We try to ensure that we have many programs for all students and that those programs are, um, they are, they're, they're for those students that, and they're for those students at that level that in which they are partnering for the trip up there, but they are appropriate for the level in which they are trying to learn. So for that, I say that we're not about banning books. The St. Grand Valley School District has not done that. We do have a process that people in the community or, or teachers or students can come and use to be able to voice their concern about anything that we do teach.
So, our district is determining curriculum based on Colorado State standards and the expertise that we have within the administration that is deeply founded in educational science, research-based learning, et cetera. We do have a very diverse district and, and what is nice about Colorado is that in addition to meeting the Colorado State standards, there is some independence that districts can have around also having books that reflect the community. So for instance, my kids introduced me to a book about Chief Nywot that was assigned to them in their English class and I learned a whole lot and actually had our, our adult book club read for one of our sessions. I think those are great opportunities. When there are concerns from a family, again, in our very diverse district, as Yosha said, there is a process. So my experience in this district has been that there's been a very open-door policy for parents to come in and ask questions about what's being taught, what tools are being used in the classroom, and there is a way to navigate that if there's something that is a concern to a particular family, to find another solution for that type of learning. Again, very important that all students have access to a world-class education, so we're not going to bring sort of a narrow focus into our educational planning. That can be done on a family-by-family basis.
Okay, hi. St. Grand, we teach good, we teach bad, we even teach math. You have to remember that our students are really tech-savvy, so even fantasize that you can limit what a student can get from the internet, it's, it's kind of a fallacy. So we look at the real proper of it. When we look at St. Grand, first of all, it, it does amazing research to figure out what kind of curriculum is bringing into the district and it is fact-based. So, our students are open to dealing with our teachers and our teachers are dealing with our students and I think the best thing for them is to have open conversations. And if we have open conversations, then we can get to the merits of, is this something that is factual? Is this something that can? When I was in school, we always said, we had to find three different people to justify what you were saying. And I think today, maybe we should say fifteen. But we have to have a real understanding that our students are civs and they really want to learn and that's our goal. Our goal is to make them lifelong learners, to get excited about education and then have conversations within their school, with their teachers.
What are your priorities for ensuring schools are physically and emotionally safe for all students, including addressing bullying and harassment, which we know disproportionately affect historically margin-wise and exclude students in most of the communities?
So this is, um, one of the pillars of the campaign is around safety and oftentimes when we're thinking about safety, we're thinking about the security of buildings, but safety is also something that needs to be focused on inside the building and making sure that children, students feel safe in their educational environment. One of my priorities would be to make sure that as we're determining the budget, that we are really putting enough resources toward mental health support, toward restorative justice efforts if we are in a situation of bullying or things like that to a marginalized group. And making sure that our counselors, especially at the high school level, are not carrying such a heavy load that they're not able to really see every one of their students and recognize when something is happening before it becomes a crisis. So my priority would be making sure that we have enough resources in the budget to address those potential problems.
Hi, um, gotta remember I had eight years' experience on the board and when I first talked about coming back, I actually had some counselors reach out to me and say, "Here's some of the things you want to pillar and change or to adopt and to get done better." And I had to say, "Look, I'm running, I'm not on and I'm definitely with you." But I also had some students that I worked with over my tenure and I love the mentorship programs and I think that's one of the things I would like to see really built up is mentoring, mentoring from our community, mentoring from our businesses, mentoring from our teachers and mentoring kids-to-kids. I think that really offers a lot of opportunities to bring the community together. So we have to find those gaps that are maybe going through the cracks or getting there's enough assistance if they should and, and figure out a way to really bring the community as a whole together. And I think that's what saves our community together is really acting as a unit. So I'm, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm done with my time. All right, I'm, I, that's okay, thank you.
So first and foremost, St. Grand Valley School District, and one of our policies is that we have a zero tolerance for bullying. It's not acceptable, it's not okay. And what people don't, sometimes students don't understand and sometimes adults don't understand is that bullying can affect a person for life, for lifelong. And just saying words and now we have it on social media where students are bullied as well, those things impact those students throughout, can impact those students throughout their lives. So that's not something that we want to encourage nor accept in our school district and we don't, first and foremost. We have over a hundred and fifty-six counselors, psychologists and interventionalists in our schools and at every elementary school, we have a counselor. So in the St. Grand Valley School District, we are blessed and we are proud that we are able to have these resources for our students to be able to utilize at their needs, at their, their leisure. We also try to encourage and change and normalize that mental health is just important, if not more important than physical health. Because mental health, if you don't, if you're not mentally healthy, you're not going to be able to do anything physically. If you're not mentally healthy, healthy, you're not going to be able to go to school and thrive. So we want each and every one of our students to be mentally healthy and for that, we make sure that we put our dollars and our focus in the, in the area of their, their mental health through our dollars. And over forty-five million dollars over the last, the last decade has been devoted to that.
With Colorado's school funding strained by cable restrictions and anticipated draconian federal budget cuts to education, what principles would guide your budget priorities? John Muster.
Um, St. Grand should be very proud of its financial budgets. We, over the course of, I was on the board, went for a bond that passed. We had a incredible, strong fiduciary reporting and we're AAA and with that, we've allowed ourselves to return some of the money that was taken in bonds and put it into other assets. And that we've done without taxing our taxpayers anymore and, you know, no one wants to pay more taxes. I would say though, education is probably the greatest thing we can do for our communities that bonds us together. It makes us stronger as a fully unit. It makes us have kids that are prepared to take over and take care of us someday. So we really have to give that some focus. But fiduciary, I was with Don at a, I think we were in Texas talking and he said something that really struck with me, or stuck with me and he said, "If you show me your budget, I'll tell you what your values are." And that struck home because it really is a problem that we make sure every penny goes to where it should go and every penny is protected. And I think we should be very happy that St. Grand has done such a great job to take care of the taxpayers' money and not waste it and we've grown substantially.
Thank you. So one of our primary duties as a board is to ensure that we take care of the taxpayer dollars that we, that we, we take in. We, as a budget, we don't do or deal with the day-to-day operations. That's not day-to-day dollars, that's an operational thing, but at the highest level, we ensure that our budget priorities are set, that we understand what's in the budget and we understand how that budget is being spent. That's our primary goal as a, as a, as a board. Our superintendent is very, very meticulous in making sure that every dollar is known where it is and where it goes. And mainly because we want to ensure that those dollars go directly to our student learning and our student success through our teachers and through our programs. Now, just in the past few months, in November, we, we, just last November, we passed the bond and that was, that was awesome because it was over seven hundred million dollars that we passed. In addition to that, because we were so fiscally responsible with our dollars, none of that cost you any extra money. We were able to pass that bond and then when we sold that bond, we actually made more money off of that because, because, because of our AAA rating. So we are being very fiscally responsible with our dollars and with that, we ensure that our students have good programming, they have top-of-the-rate programming and we're also looking at different types of programs that we can bring into the school district that we haven't even thought of that the industry is going to. So I, I'll say that St. Grand Valley School District, in comparison to many other school districts that I've been around, we are doing a phenomenal job when it comes to managing our dollars and your dollars as well.
So, when we were, when the question was asked about what are your priorities in the, you know, situation in which you may have constrained funding, we are very fortunate as both of my friends up here have said, to have had the support of the community to pass bill levies and bond issues. That said, that is always a risk for a school district. Public education in Colorado has not been funded, really the legislature has not voted to meet its obligations that were actually promised. So we have had to be creative about that. For me, the priorities are certainly on academic excellence and, and I think there are two primary areas of opportunity there. One is making sure that educators continue to be well-compensated in this district. That makes it a destination district for the best teachers that we can get and I think that we need to continue to invest in that. The second is leveraging technology and tools that can help our educators be more efficient in the way that they're delivering education while keeping their role as a human-centered resource for students is another area that I would want to make sure that we are investing in the technology, the professional development for educators to allow them to do that and for our district to be able to operate more efficiently.
As promised, you get three minutes for closing remarks and I think it's Yosha's turn to be the first one up.
Again, I want to thank each and every one of you for being here. I know that you've taken time out of your day, your busy day to be here, to hear us and hear everything we had to say. I'm honored to be here and I'm honored to serve. I'm a servant leader, I've been that for all of my life, I would say. And you say, "All of your life?" Well, it's up to you a little, yes, but even then, little people can serve and I've done that all of my life. And I do that out of the goodness of my heart. I do it because I love to do it and I do it because I know the people who I serve are going to be better for me serving for them. I have, have started on this journey many years ago, four years ago on the board and ever since then, I've worked with my colleagues on the board and people in the community and heard a lot of the things that they need and the things that they want. And I've tried, I've tried my best to ensure that every time I talk to someone, that I first listen and hear what they're saying, take in and process, and then I ask the question, "How is it that I can help them be better? How is it that I can help their child be better? And how is it that I can help this community be better?" And that's, that's what I stand by when I say I serve. I can't change everything and I can't guarantee you everything, but what I can say is that I'll do my best to ensure that every student in this school district gets a quality education, get a valued education and they feel valued so when they walk out this door, walk out of those school doors, those safe schools that we have, they can say, "I'm proud to be a graduate of St. Grand Valley School District." Just this past weekend, I celebrated my thirtieth class reunion and it was so great to see my, my classmates, some I haven't seen in over thirty years. Thirty years, don't start counting my age. Thirty years. But in that thirty years, when we go back, we still see the community, we still saw those, those people that were there, how we stood together. And my school district as a whole no longer stands, but the school does. And even though that school district no longer stands, we are still one and we have done that for the last thirty years to ensure that we are still one. And so I say to the students here in St. Grand Valley School District, they too can be still one through the valued education, the great teachers that we have, the robust programming that we have, the fiscal, fiscal responsibility that we have, with our phenomenal budget. I know sometimes you talk about budget cuts, but at the end of the day, when you begin to manage that money and you manage it correctly, you can see the returns, even if there are budget cuts, we can still educate our students. So I thank you for being here tonight and I, and I ask you, I know we're on the board, that you vote for me, Yosha, back at your ballots.
Thank you very much for coming and I appreciate Thank you very much for coming, and I appreciate being here. I had the honor of serving for eight years, and it really made an impact on me. I've been a business owner. I've owned several businesses. I've lived in Colorado for 36 years. But I've also started life in New England. And I've lived on St. Thomas, and I've lived in California. So those are all experiences that I have. I approached the district being of the board the same way. Kind of bring all your expertise to the table. We, as a board, who serves on the board, work as a cohesive unit. And it really is amazing to see the power of how, when people work together and communicate together, you come to an agreement. It's not a tough agreement. It's something that is validated by all the list of programs that are knocked off one by one. And so I'm very confident. I'm going to call myself the bookend candidate, because when I started, we had the floods. And some of you remember the floods. We had to move schools. We had to move heaven and earth to get the school back up and running. And we did it in such an enthusiastic manner that I was just enthralled with the expertise of our teachers. So that taught me a lot. Then on my backend, we had a pandemic, which I didn't think we could get worse than the floods. Pandemic was very much a learning experience for me. And I'm just really grateful to have that open learning that I have and what I've developed with our administrators and our teachers. When I went into Erie High School, the news was already out that I was planning on making a return. And they're like, "Oh, you're coming back." We're so excited. Like, hold on, I'm running. I'm not coming back yet, but I hope I do come back. I have the opportunity that a lot of board members don't have, and that's, I have time. So I was lucky. I had this state of Colorado come to me when I was running on the board and sent a group to Washington to talk. And one of the greatest honors that I had was speaking with John Lewis when I was there, which was pretty amazing. I had two things that I accomplished on the board by my, well, pretty much by myself. One, I got laptops to all the teachers. I brought that idea to the school board. And I was honored to bring it across to the district too. And I got school board athlete, I don't know how to phrase it, but I was the athlete board member of the year in 2019. But thank you very much. I'm John Aaron. So help you both for me.
I'm going to take a little bit of this time just to tell you a little bit more about myself. I was certainly focused on the platform and what I hope to do as a school board member. But I also wanted to let you know sort of what I do in my professional life. And over the last 30 years of professional work, the common thread has been problem solving. So I work a lot on business process engineering. I work on helping small companies build out strong teams. And I really would love to apply that to, and I have applied that, to my volunteer work. I tend to approach problems with a lot of curiosity and optimism. I think that problems can be solved. And they are best solved by groups and teams of people who are earnest and committed to finding creative solutions. So that's what I would bring to the school district. I would say that as a parent, what I have experienced and watched, both as a community leader in the schools and watching my kids go through it, is that they are being instilled with some of those same skills and values around solving problems, learning how to think critically, learning how to think, rather than being told what to think. I really do believe that, as I mentioned earlier, public education, we depend on it as a society. We depend on an informed, critically-thinking group of people who have been taught, you know, our standards and what we expect and what they need to go forth and be productive members of our community. One thing that I, when I talked about my platform around Pathways to Opportunities, that's something that this district is doing almost better than anybody in the country. The profile of our district nationally is very high because of programs that we've developed like PTEC and PTH and building a pipeline of educators to come back into the district. Those are some of the creative solutions that I want to help the board continue to move forward with, manage the budget responsibly so that we can deliver those services and really help our community continue to be a destination where people want to move here, people want their kids in these schools. I think I have the skills to do that, and I certainly have the curiosity and optimism to contribute to the board and get that done. So thank you very much.
Thank you all so much. That was the final segment of the School Board Forum. And I want to thank all three of you for respecting the time limits and providing thoughtful and insightful answers and leading us with a much better appreciation of where to stand on these issues. We're going to take a 10-minute break. And so we'll be back at 7:05, and we will be setting up for the mayoral forum next. And so the mayoral candidates, if you're in the room, come on out. And everyone else, if you can go with a staff or go through the public facility. And then be back at 7:05.
Welcome to our mayor forum. We have four candidates here and we will start by giving them each an introduction where they can speak about themselves and that for three minutes. And then we will continue on to the questions and answers. And we will each have a minute and a half. And hopefully a little more successfully now that I've got the lineup. I will alternate who gets the question first. So, would you like to start?
So, welcome. My name is Diane Christ and I'm running for mayor. I'm currently the councilwoman for Ward 1, which is primarily the northeast side of town all the way down to Sandstone Ranch. So, welcome everyone. This is also the original Ward, by the way. I am a accountant that works with local businesses and startups in town. And, what do I want to say about that? Accounting is more interesting than it used to be. I'm in business development, actually. So, one of the things I did as a councilwoman for Ward 1 is I worked on building this north side Safeway off of Seventeenth and Pace. It'd been empty for five years, maybe as long as seven, but it's become lighted and was pulling down the rest of the commercial area there. And they always say, "It's not what you know, but it's who you know that can help you get things done." And so, I can't say I made all the calls, but we did have three perspectives look at that property. And now, Bosa, which is a recreation center, is constructing as we speak and is going to open by the end of the year, we hope. So, those were two of the goals that I had for, two of the three goals that I had for Ward 1 was to increase recreation on the north side of town. And then also, to build that Safeway and then get the others. So, how unique is that? And one of the other goals that we had was, because I don't know if you remember, it was on the ballot, to have extended library service. And we definitely needed more library service on the north side of town. And my colleague here, Suzie Hidogo-Faring, brought it forward. She's on the library board. To, in my mind, I thought, "Let's fill another retail spot." But she had a brilliant idea. And they, the library board, put forward library lockers at Centennial Park, which is also on the north side of town. So, you can order your books, the library delivers them there, and then you can return them there. And that should be where you go by the end of the year, I hope, too. Yeah, so there's three good things. Now, what do we need to do? I mean, how do we build back our Longmont? Something that we heard in the last session. Because, you know, we've been through a flood, we've been through a pandemic. We've taken a few hits. And some of that has really been social impact as well. So, how do we move forward? Now, my background says business. So, I'm saying, "Let's work on business. It empowers the government and our economy. Let's reduce burdens on business. Let's reduce the cost of living and improve supply-side economics." I'll say that carefully so you can look it up on AI. And let's keep our focus on our leading edge of the Longmont, especially when it comes to innovation and science and technology. And then, let's find a way to design beauty in our lives and with each other. Thank you so much.
My name is Shaquille Malam. I'm running for mayor because local government is supposed to be the most effective and responsive level of government. But if you look at government today, trust in government has never been lower. You don't have to look hard at the national government to understand that. If you want to see that at the local level, go to any streets meeting about changes in the neighborhood. This is an existential threat to our democracy. And we have to restore that trust by demonstrating that we can improve people's lives in local government. We need to focus on outcomes. I've spoken to thousands of Longmonters this year, and they have three overriding concerns. The first is our escalating cost of living. As you can see, in the cost of housing, the cost of transportation, and the cost of childcare. Second, they're concerned about quality of life, which you can see in our traffic problems and concerns about public safety. And third, they're concerned about the vitality of our local economy. And they see that in struggling small businesses and people who are struggling who make the minimum wage or sometimes less. These are not new problems. And therefore, we cannot be trotting out the same old solutions that we've tried before. We need new people with new ideas who know how to innovate. People who have invented things and taken them from just an idea to something that works in the real world. I moved to Longmont eight years ago to start a manufacturing business servicing the aerospace, semiconductor, and tool and die industries. I'm a scientist by profession, and I currently build and test spaceships. But public service is my passion. I'm also an immigrant. And I feel a deep moral obligation to ensure that the next generation of Americans has access to the same opportunities that helped my family thrive in this country. In 2018, I became a political writer for the Longmont Observer, where I moderated 12 city council debates and the US House of Representatives debate. In 2020, I helped get Longmont Public Media off the ground and began my service on the City of Longmont Professional Standards Unit, which reviews police misconduct allegations. In 2021, I joined the board of the Longmont Community Foundation, where I brought a focus on the small nonprofits that help our community thrive when our community or the people in it are struggling. And in 2022, I co-founded Launch Longmont Housing, which is focused on bringing creative and innovative policies to help make housing affordable while also preserving quality of life. I have seen Longmont's government work and not work. We need leaders who understand that we don't have a cost of living problem and a hunger problem and a small business problem and deep environmental obligations. These problems are all tied to each other, and therefore, so are the solutions. We need to take decisive action. And we need leaders who understand the complicated systems that undergird all of these problems so that we can work on them together. And by doing this, we can ensure that Longmont stays the kind of place where anyone who shows up here can find the community and opportunity that they deserve.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Suzie Hidogo-Faring. I'm honored to be here tonight as a candidate for mayor of Longmont. My husband and I raised our three children here in this community over 20 years ago. And since 2019, I've proudly represented Ward 3 and currently serve as mayor pro town. In this capacity, I have been able to gain so much experience. I'm a different leader than when I came in in 2019. And it was through these conversations, connections, and relationships formed along the way that really guided who I am as a leader, how I represent the community. In 2019, I was drinking from a fire hose and boom, came COVID. And how we had to redirect everything we were doing. You know, we had all of our goals and objectives and all these great things and shiny things that we wanted to look at. But the reality was, we needed to make sure people stayed alive. We needed to keep the vitality of our community strong and being able to turn on a pivot to meet the needs of our community. Over the years, I've served as, and public service is my lifeblood. I've done it all my adult life, even in the high school. But, you know, I've served in multiple voluntary capacities. A catechist at my church, St. John's, when my kids were little. So, costumes for Longmont Dance Theater. I've worked and volunteered for several nonprofits with food distribution, clothing distribution. I work in a Title I school, where I serve predominantly low-income students, a lot of immigrant families, who face the barriers of access to language. So, over the years, in my service in the school district, is building those capacities for access to food, access to housing, access to language, so they can actually play, you know, be leaders in the community. So, that's my lifeblood. And, you know, so as I come into this role, I feel like this is the next level up to help support and serve community. So, I've come in with the wealth of experience, five and a half years. Having been mayor pro town, being able to serve alongside the mayor and the city manager and other staff around critical and addressing critical infrastructure needs, balancing the budget, looking at what priorities we want to pursue to keep our community vibrant, but also to ensure sustainability of our infrastructure, our streets, our roads, our water, safe and clean water. And make sure that our growth, the growth that we do, because we're going to grow, but make sure that our growth is manageable, that it is smart, and it is meeting the needs of our community. And we have a diverse community. People with disabilities, immigrants, we have various income levels. So, I want to be here to serve you all. Thank you.
My name is Sarah Levinson, and I'm running for mayor. And I'm a 28-year resident of Longmont. My husband Hal, who's sitting in the back, and I have raised two now adult daughters, and we live in the southeast side. Couple of things. The city council and the mayor cannot lower interest rates, make housing less expensive. But we can take one bold step. And that is to end a regressive tax. And that is the city sales tax on groceries. The most progressive thing you can do is end a regressive tax. If you think about it, those of higher income, we go out to eat. So, we're paying less for food we consume at home. My neighbors are on fixed income, and paying a sales tax on food for every single meal they eat at home hurts them. If you look at it this way, you spend $10,000 a year on food. That equates to $192.60 a week. That's $353 that the city will not collect in tax at the grocery store. However, they will collect that tax for everything you spend that $353 on. It could be shoes, it could be laundry detergent. In fact, it could even be your utility bill. You look at Nextdoor or Facebook, there are people on every single day asking for food assistance. Our seniors are working families. So, the one bold move, and it's bold, to ask us to end a regressive tax. The second idea I've had that I think will engage our residents much in a way that Shaquille wants to is a new and innovative program called Budget Bucks. Our capital improvement program. We can set aside 5% and allow any, including youth, member of our Longmont community to propose a project that they want funded. This is done in many cities. I had firsthand witnessed it in the 49th ward in Chicago with Joe Moore. And instead of him taking his allocation, allocation of the money that he's given by the city of Chicago just for his ward, he opened it up to everybody. And I was there the day they did the project presentations. I would look at it as a Shark Tank competition. Bring the ideas. And I am not going to suggest what the innovative and experienced and wonderful people of Longmont are going to come up with. And in the program in Chicago, once that vote happened and people said, "These are the projects we want to fund", they were funding guaranteed. I think this would be a wonderful way to engage people, especially new residents who have new ideas and a new vision for Longmont.
How would you ensure that you are hearing from residents who don't typically engage in formal city processes? And what specific methods would you use to reach them and bring their concerns forward to the city council?
So, hearing from residents is a core part of the job. And the most important thing that we can do to ensure that we are hearing the voices of as many residents as possible is to be in the information spaces where residents are. It is not sufficient for us to be posting stuff on the city website or in the Times Call, because the reality is that fewer and fewer people are reading that red letter in the newspaper. We need to engage in new media. We have an innovative organization here called Longmont Public Media, which happens to be recording and live streaming this. You can't find a city council member in any locally-produced media. I would change that. I would ensure that I would show up at any time anyone asked to interview me for a local show, because that is where residents are. We need to be on social media, because that is where residents get most of the information. It's depressing to say, because I hate social media, but the reality is that most people don't get their news from a trusted news source. They get it on social media. And so, if we are not there as elected officials hearing what they are hearing and responding to them with trustworthy and factual information, they're going to be left at the whims of whatever else is out there. As mayor, I would pledge to be at every public festival so that I can be findable, because it's very hard to petition your government for a redress of grievances if you don't even know who the mayor is or how to reach them. And that is a problem that we have to fix right now. Finally, I want to say that it's also important to understand as elected officials that the people in this room right now are like the most engaged 1% of people in the city of Longmont in politics. No matter what, no matter what we're hearing, we need to make sure that we're hearing the voices of the people who aren't in the room.
Thank you. So, during my time, you know, we have our coffee with council. And again, every month, you know, you typically see the same faces who show up. Some of the things that I've done during my time on council is actually going out into the neighborhoods where I hosted little, just little community gatherings. I've attended HOA meetings, I've attended little community neighborhood gatherings. So, invite me, I'll show up. Invite me. So, in addition to attending our festivals, attending our city-sponsored events, as well as other nonprofit events and other cultural events, I'm there. And one of the things that was very important to me is making sure that I'm hitting also neighborhoods that are often underrepresented. Coming from teaching at the school where I teach at, it's a Title I school. A lot of the community is low-income. I'm actually working with city staff, library, museum, children's youth and families to get into those communities and work with the residents, as well as have enhancing opportunities for the kids as well. And so, it's building that bridge and breaking down those barriers. So, media is very important, and, you know, that piece can happen. But also, that face-to-face connection is something that I value and something that's really meaningful to folks.
The first thing I did when I was elected city council. 2007, we were sworn in one day, and the next day was the first regular session. The previous city council had written off and closed effectively the ice skating rink. And when I was going to school ball festivals and campaigning, I heard from hockey parents. It was summertime. We weren't thinking hockey, but the city council wrote this valuable resource we had in this little hockey rink in Roosevelt Park out. And I said, "You show up, and I will open my mouth," and that's what I do. We had immediately restored the hockey rink, the ice skating rink at Roosevelt Park. And even though it wasn't in the rec guide, because it had already been published, they saw 150% increase, because people came together and helped set up the rink. They worked with staff, they fixed the zamboni that was broken. That's the kind of way I work. These ideas that I've had, the Rise Anti-Poverty Program and the other innovative programs that I brought, like the Open Forum, which is a meeting that still happens today that began in January of 2008 because of my suggestion. These are ways that people can find the governments more accessible. I agree, we do have to be visible as council members. I do have doubts about council members posting on social media. I think the city attorney is rolling over if he's sleeping right now, because that's a risk thing. But, thank you.
So, the city gives us several mediums. We have email, we have voicemail, we have phones, we have public invited to be heard. We have coffee with council. These are all ways that you can access the city council. But I have to agree with my colleague Suzie Hidogo-Faring in that some of what works best for me is just to walk around in my neighborhood. A lot of times, walking my dog. And I have a multicultural neighborhood, in fact, we're mostly all immigrants and not always, sometimes even English as a second language type and wearing cultural garb also. So, being able to connect with people that are the same status. I'm a second-generation immigrant here. And we didn't come here to start a business. We came here to work in the coal mines and in the steel mills. So, that's a whole nother story, but it'll come up. Anyway, I live in a modest home, I live in a modest neighborhood. Some of those people will never come to city council because they fear government. But they will talk to me out on the street. And I've worked with hundreds of businesses in town, and they call me frequently to tell me what's going on in the business community. So, also, some of the people that my kids went to sports with, their parents are now serving their community. And we talk too about what's working, what's working here, what's working there, what's working in your town, and what has worked in the past, and what do we need to see different that our children have. So, it's about community and engagement. Thank you.
With the strains that growth puts on our infrastructure, housing affordability, transportation, and quality of life, what specific proposals would you like to see implemented to help manage Longmont's growth for the next five to 10 years?
So, I'm first. You know, we have a wonderful open space program. And last year, I proposed to bring forward our ballot measure to cover and pay for open space in perpetuity. And it passed by three-quarters of the vote. So, that tells me that open space and having these greenways and trailways are very important to our community. And so, advocating for those. So, as we look at development, to ensure that we're developing in spaces that, just brownfield space, like the sugar mill or, you know, other empty lots that Walmart, where Walmart used to stand over by Hobby Lobby, that those vacant spaces that are not pristine, that are not, that don't hold valuable habitat, that we are utilizing those types of spaces and being thoughtful and cognizant of the types of builds we put there to not weigh there, to not weigh heavy on our infrastructure, our roads, our transportation mechanisms, as well as water. I'm very concerned about water. You know, we've done a lot of work with, you know... You know, we've done a lot of work with cleaning and recycling. 90% of our water then gets put back into the supply for irrigation in the city spaces and as well as watering your own lawns and gardens. So you know, being thoughtful and cognizant of those kinds of ways that we can preserve our own utilities and our own water as we inform the development.
If you look at my website, I think the one candidate that's called for a moratorium on new housing starts. Next year in 2026, we are going to update In Vision Longmont, which is our comprehensive and multimodal transportation plan. It makes no sense to continue to approve new developments when we already have a slew that are in and ready to build. Number two, when we do traffic studies, maybe along Nelson Road, Hoover, as we're going west, we do a piecemeal. This development is building. There's 45 cars coming, but we don't see that there are 150 cars in the next two parcels that are already in the slot to be built. We need to do some real comprehensive planning. And I think with the moratorium, once we have the vision, and I want to engage our residents and businesses much differently than we normally have to do In Vision Longmont. I really want people to do workshops. And I have a couple of methods I've already studied to really build the city future of Longmont. What do we want? Where do we want it? And more importantly, what happens on the last buildable acre in Longmont?
Could you repeat the question for me? That was a line.
With the streams that growth puts on our housing, infrastructure, housing affordability, transportation, quality of life, what specific proposals would you like to see for Longmont the next five to 10 years?
Ah, okay. That explains the whole enchilada that we're getting. Okay, so I've been talking about a right project in the right place. Also, the right time to build. We've been trying to build during high inflation and that has driven up costs. And also for the right demographic. So one of the things that we have is we have an aging population. As you know, baby boomers that are growing older. And baby boomers that want to downsize might have a hard time getting into an apartment because only the ground level is accessible if you're elderly. But if we're building a few apartment complexes that are four or five-story high, now we're trying to preserve beauty, not go too high above tree line. Some of those are right across from the cannery. And I was excited about that project. It's just not quite beautiful enough for me. But it does have elevators in it, which means that all of those units are available for seniors and those who have disability. And they can access that. Now, I think we have to be very careful while we're building that we're not doing a permanent solution to a temporary problem because eventually our demographics are going to change. Generation Z is quite a bit smaller than the baby boomers. So we need to be flexible and have a wider lens view of how our growth is going to occur. Thank you.
At the end of the day, the solution to this problem is incrementalism. Right now, we have a city comprehensive plan that concentrates growth in just a few parts of town. And this creates the dislocations that people feel that feels like is causing dramatic change. Instead of trying to predict the future by trying to predict where people are going to want to live in the future and restricting our development to those areas, instead we need to embrace incremental approaches everywhere in the city so that the people who live in that neighborhood have the freedom to make the decisions about what's right for them. Right now, in 65% of the city, there is no other kind of home that you can build except the most expensive, hardest to maintain, most environmentally intensive. People should have the freedom to make other choices. One way that we could do this is by legalizing townhomes everywhere in the city as I proposed. Right now, you can't build a townhome in most neighborhoods in the city. This helps with affordability. As I said earlier, we can't keep trying the same ideas. People have tried the idea of freezing all development or only allowing the most expensive types of development. And if you want to see the results of that, feel free to go look at Boulder. Feel free to go look at San Francisco. Because we live in a society where money decides who gets to live where, if we further restrict and create a greater scarcity of homes, the only people who will be able to afford them are the people who have the most money, which is a problem that we have right now and which is why housing is getting more expensive. Just a quick note on water. In the past 25 years, the city of Longmont's population has gone up by about 28,000. We actually use the same amount of water as we did 25 years ago. Conservation works.
A healthy city needs a mix of housing types to give entry points and economic mobility for anyone who wants to join the community. How would you work to make Longmont this type of community? And I believe it is your time to be involved.
So I live in historic East Side neighborhood. I live in the neighborhood that Shaquille envisions. We have on my block, single-family homes. We have single-family homes with ADUs where the owner lives in the main house and her daughter lives in the ADU. The original purpose of having an ADU. We also live in a neighborhood where there are small infill, tiny apartments in an eight-plex with a small parking lot in the back. It all works. Historic East Side. Take a walk down anywhere between, basically, our neighborhood starts on Emory Street and goes all the way to Martin. Take a look. There are many houses that have basement apartments. And you can see the various eras of building in Longmont because those little brick apartment buildings were a house that was torn down. Maybe it was dilapidated, maybe not. But everything works. And you can tell the architectural development of the neighborhood because of this incremental approach. When you have already established neighborhoods, it's hard to shove that in unless you want to start tearing down homes and then disrupting the character of the neighborhood. I also believe that in our established neighborhoods, especially ones without HOAs, we have to get development, new development, that actually fits in the character of the neighborhood. We can't put up a stainless steel and cement block building that looks like the Bauhaus era if everything else is above the low or of Victoria.
Well, I agree with a lot that has been said. I'm not excited about townhomes everywhere because a lot of townhomes now are not only two-story, but sometimes up to three-story. And if you have just a reasonable-sized yard and your neighbor puts up a three-story building, your whole yard is in shade. And so now you don't have a garden anymore. And that can happen. I also think that our founders really built the city well. They put it on a grid system. They really considered what building would go where. And the infill kind of happened naturally as Sarah Levison was just now saying. And I think we have maintained that culture in Longmont. And we really believe in rugged independence. But also, we are very community-oriented. And so I think like in our neighborhood, we're very cautious with our neighbors. We sort of have a four-plex where whatever we do in each other's yard affects the neighbors around us. So we have a confab about, hey, what do you think about, you know, if I put this on my garage, is that going to affect you? You know, and the lights on that side of your house going to keep me awake at night, that kind of thing. And I think as a group, Longmont is very good about being community-oriented and building community and the housing to go along with it.
So when it comes to a mix of housing types, this is exactly the mistake created by our overly-restricted zoning. I also live in Old Town. And if you look at the difference between Old Town and a lot of other parts of town, the difference is that most of Old Town was built before zoning existed. And so whoever owned the parcel built whatever it was that they wanted. And it was allowed to change over time. If you look at a Prospect neighborhood, Prospect tries to recreate the form of what you get when you allow this, but it makes the mistake of being built all at once. And so as a result, that neighborhood doesn't have businesses that are able to survive because it's not adaptable over time in the way that our best neighborhoods like Old Town are and in the way that they've developed. At its core, what I am talking about is restoring the development pattern that created Old Town and the historic East Side and the historic West Side. These are great neighborhoods that we can live in. One of the benefits of adaptability and what I'm proposing is to legalize convergence. I'll give you an example. My fiance's family has lived in the same home since the early 90s. They are not, their kids have moved away. And in order to age in place, they are moving out of the second floor of their house. But because that they're not allowed to do anything there besides have a single-family home, they're basically going to have an abandoned second floor while they live on the first floor. It should be legal for them to add a kitchen, wall off the second floor and sell that to a young family that wants to live in their great neighborhood so that they can have the same opportunities that they did when they were younger. The other benefit this confirms is that it means that a family who wants to start a business can live above the store.
And just for clarity, I'm going to ask you to repeat the question. It is hard when you're the fourth one.
A healthy city needs a mix of housing types to give entry points and economic mobility for anyone who wants to join the community. How would you make Longmont this type of community?
Okay, so thank you. So you know, throughout our time on council, and it has to be very thoughtful and methodical. And it also has to bring in resident priorities and input along the way so that we are changing and we are developing in a way that meets the need. Throughout my time, I've had opportunities to speak with several residents, you know, just part of a group of coalition of parents where we have children with disabilities that, you know, what we're finding is as they're entering their, you know, becoming 70s and 80s and their children are now adults, worried about what's going to happen when they pass on, where their, what's going to, you know, just the livelihood of their children as they can't be independent. So looking at different types of housing, I did have a chance to work with a developer who does live in Longmont. And he worked on a project, Trailhead in Blainwood, where it provided 84 condos. And with those condos, they were specifically designed for IDD, Individuals with Disabilities. And but what they found was it was a mix. So it was half were IDD residents and the other half seniors. And they were coming together. And because of the design that was trauma-informed, it actually was adaptable for seniors. So they built a community within. So looking at creative ideas and options that do meet the needs of Longmont and how we can bring those in.
What actions would you take to bring in jobs that pay above the minimum and living wages and help people move up the ladder?
So when you're on city council, you actually serve on about six different boards. One of the boards that I serve on is the Longmont Economic Development Partnership. And we have a new, really savvy director, Kelly Sage, who is bringing in a lot of high-tech-type businesses, but not only high-tech, but high-tech support businesses that do have very high-paying jobs. I also want to say that we tend to focus on high-paying jobs, but honestly, when local business does well, the jobs are paid better than you might think. For instance, I have fabricators that I work with and the Pipe Fitters Union. If you have children that need to know this, they pay you while you train to be a pipe fitter. And it's like $22 an hour while you're going to school. And then after you get out and you get a job, I mean, it goes up from there like $55 an hour, which is better than what we're talking about for some of the high-tech businesses. So I'm just saying, don't write off all the great skilled labor jobs in town. I do have a business degree. I have an accounting degree. And I've worked with businesses for a lot of years. And one of the things we need to do is remove the burdens that are affecting businesses. We've identified 44 at the state level that are costing about $1,500 a year for each business owner. And business powers our economy. So we really need to work on that because that's what pays our taxes.
So the most important thing that I think we can do to ensure high-paying jobs enter the city is to think carefully about small business creation and entrepreneurship. It is very hard to start a business in Longmont if you don't have the ability to pay commercial rent upfront because there are very few parts of town where you can start a business out of your garage. I know someone in town who was selling fresh food and farmer's market excess and stuff from his garden and organically sourced food from local farms out of the garage in the back of his home. It was on the honor system, basically. You walk up, you, you know, take what you need and then you would Venmo them. They got a letter from the city saying that they were violating city ordinances by operating a business at home. That's not right. It shouldn't be that way. More to the point, right now in our mixed-use employment zones, it is a conditional secondary use to have a contractor shop. What that means is, and some of the best, highest-paying jobs in the city are tradespeople. They may be carpenters or plumbers or electricians. And if they need a shop where they want to do fabrication for their more complicated jobs, they have to go through a six-month approval process in planning and zoning before they can do that to do it in a mixed-use employment zone. This is another case where we've been overly restrictive by treating businesses as nuisances rather than as core community assets that employ people and build local wealth because local businesses spend their money locally, they employ locals, and they keep that money in our economy, which we are trying to make more self-reliant.
So recently, we had a fishbowl to discuss the minimum wage, raising the minimum wage. And in that conversation, we heard from several small local businesses who did feel very strapped with high lease pay, with just permitting when they had to get a new stove or re-furnish their kitchen. So as city council, as mayor, I would really like to move forward and have closer ties with our LEDP, with our Chamber and Latino Chamber to ensure that we are hearing what those complications are and what do we need to be doing as a system to streamline those processes to make it affordable for people to want to get into a business, who want to start a business and to be able to sustain that business. So that is something that I really took to heart when I was listening in that fishbowl conversation. I think it's important that we are in tune with what's happening in our neighborhood, with our businesses because they are the cornerstone. They are what makes Longmont unique. They are what makes us a culture in our own. And so ensuring that we are valuing that and finding ways to support in our policies that they can open business and stay in business and pay their employees a livable wage.
I think everybody wants to come to Longmont to do business. I had a small business and downtown business meet and greet yesterday and had some really productive conversations. One conversation I had with a Latina business owner was the woman that owns the Guadalupe Coffee Shop on 17th and Main. And her main frustration was she had business experience, she had drive, she knew what she was doing, and she had great products. But she said, no one will lend to me until I've been a success, until somebody else has invested. So maybe the city starts an investment program for small businesses. Maybe we do fund the Latino Chamber or programs at the Chamber of Commerce to do a deeper mentorship so people can learn how to do business well off the bat. Second thing, when we're looking at doing brownfield remediation, just as Front Range Community College has an advanced manufacturing program, we could have them start an environmental remediation program. Third, to get people here that make above minimum wage, our Longmont Economic Development Partnership should be targeting those remote workers who don't need an office space. They make a lot of wages, higher wages. They can choose to live in Longmont where the quality of life is better. Other cities such as Oklahoma City, several years ago, were paying a premium for these people to come and live in their city. We should do something.
I think in the interest of
I think in the interest of time and since you've asked, you've already answered the last question that I had, we will do, go to the closing remarks. So each have three minutes for close, and I'm going to start with you because it's easy and I'm going to keep you tuned and you won't give them back.
It's like real estate's location. All right. So how do we move forward? How do we come, how do we move forward as a community? That is the question. And I've identified three things. I say beauty, science, and business are the three topics that we most need to focus on, but I'm going to veer from that a little bit. You can get my flyer and read all the details on that topic. I'm going to veer just a little bit and say that one of the things that works with a seven-headed council is collaboration. And I would say one of the things that we have going for us now is good collaboration in the council. We have four seats up for election, so let's make sure that all voices are represented, but let's also make sure that we elect people who can work with others and who put Longmont first. I do want to correct very gently some items that I think are miss, a little bit, missed the mark. For one, seven unrelated adults can live in one house together. It is not against the law to have a home-based business. And zoning is one of the contracts that we have as a community with each other as to how we're going to live in a residential area. For instance, I don't want somebody building a rendering plant next to my house, okay? But if you want to sell vegetables out of your garage, I'm okay with that. And I actually have, because I'm in a multicultural neighborhood, and we have a lot of service professionals there, and I mean, you know, like people who are carpenters and what have you. Sometimes I bring work home with them, and that's okay with us because we know. We know it's sometimes hard to make a living, especially if you, as my one neighbor has an eighth grade education, but he's a very hard worker, and he's made sure that his children get a great education, which is the immigrant way, actually. So, I hear. But what I'm trying to say is we need a mayor who listens to all voices, who gives everyone a voice on a council, because in the midst of seven people, there are jewels of information that will move us forward. And if we get stuck on a particular solution, as we sometimes do, and we're all guilty of it, then we miss the true innovation that happens in our city. So look for people that can come together, take a wide lens, and solve the problems that are facing us today. And it looks like I have 30 more seconds, so. So what can I talk about? I was going to say, I'm second generation here. One of the things when you come to the United States is citizenship is so terrifically important. We were sponsored immigrants, and I noticed the question earlier was about ICE. I just want to say it is so important to encourage people to get citizenship here. And there are four ways to do that. Check out my website. I'm going to put a link so people can, can see my family through naturalization. So, thank you.
I want to say thank you to the Longmont Area Democrats for hosting this event, Longmont Public Media for recording it, the other candidates for being here and engaging in this exchange of ideas, and to you for the bit of your evening and time that you shared with us. Thinking about what the job of the mayor is. The mayor is one vote on city council out of seven, but that is not the most important job of the mayor. I want to echo what Diane said. The job of the mayor is to create consensus among seven people who may have divergent views about what to do and how to do it, but more or less, we all share the same values on what we want to accomplish. We want what all people want and what all people everywhere want. We want to be able to raise our kids. We want to put food on the table. We want a safe place to live, and we want to thrive in that community. This isn't just about, you know, meeting, meeting the bare minimum and satisfying the bottom of Maslow's hierarchy of needs. This is about giving people the opportunity to thrive in our community, and that means more than just creating a space for them. It means giving them the opportunity for them to thrive. I have a bent towards new ideas, and I think that that is what we need on council. And I would like the opportunity to serve in this capacity in order to help push us in that direction, to push us to try new ideas, to push us to consider options that we wouldn't otherwise consider, and maybe not all of these ideas are good, but we should at least have the conversation. None of this will be easy. We have profound problems in our city that people need to have solved, and it is the job of local government as the responsive and effective form of government to address those. But because it is hard, that is why it is worth doing. Please go to my website, shakilformayor.com, where I share in as much specificity as I possibly can all of the creative ideas that I have for ways that we can improve Longmont as a community and continue our, our 150-year tradition of being an accessible and affordable community. We've been digging this hole that we're in right now for quite a long time. The real change in housing affordability in the city probably started in 2008, the depth of the financial crisis. It is going to make, take more than two years, more than just one mayor's term, to get us out of this hole, but this has to be the place where we turn the corner, because the opportunity for us as a city will never be greater, and the problem will never get easier to solve. I'm going to quote JFK. "We are not here to curse the darkness, but to light the candle that can guide us through the darkness to a safe and sane future." I believe that we have to measure the results of what we do on city council the same way that the public does, not in terms of policies passed or laws or procedures followed, but in the lives that we improve and the good that we do in the community. Thank you once again. My name is Shakil Ghalal. I'm asking for your vote for mayor on November 4th.
I have a season over here. Gotcha. Thank you. So, you know, I've had a lot of, I've had a lot of years, yes, I've had experience on council, but with that, you know, I felt like this part in my, in my journey along the way is what has given me the experience and capacity to execute this job well. And that's, that's why I decided to run for council. I am a lifelong advocate for community for, you know, as a vice president of our teachers' union and tenured member of our bargaining team, advocating for our teachers', teachers' contract and securing some of the highest salaries of, starting teacher salaries in the state of Colorado. So that was, you know, those are big, big things. Why? Because I don't back down. I'm advocating for people. And there were some, some components in that, in our negotiations where I personally did not benefit from that, that it was working for a greater good. And so that's, that's what, that's what runs in my veins in my leadership. Now, I'm not an eloquent speaker. I have a stutter, if you notice, but I work hard and I work hard for the people. And that's, that's what my, my goal is in this, in this role. The other thing is that as mayor, you know, you have, you are representing the city in the state capacity as well as the national capacity. Through the National League of Cities, I've served, I'm serving on the Kilo Council, which is the Hispanic elected local officials, the, the Youth Education and Families Council, and REAL, the Racial Equity and Leadership Council. And we meet quarterly, so pretty much I'm meeting with these councils every month. And we are talking, so there's nothing in any of the forums that I've heard and any of the discussions that I've heard that these policies that are presented are new or they're out there. They're out there. But one of the things that we discuss as elected leaders is with the biggest caveat is that you have to take these policies and practices and tailor them to the priorities and needs of your own community. And so, and it's through that, it's through understanding the diversities of our community and how we, how we represent and how we're putting that representation and how we're putting in that input from our community into our policymaking decisions. And it's not easy, it's not fast, it's messy. We argue, we do argue, especially in those executive session meetings, but, but it's, at the end of the day, it's for the people of Longmont. It's for the future of Longmont and ensuring that stability and sustainability. So you can look me up in my webpage, susiferlongmont.com, and I hope to earn your vote this November. Thank you.
I appreciate all of you coming out tonight. Appreciate having three other candidates in this race because I think that we all push each other to be, articulate our positions better. I also appreciate the dedication and passion in this room. So many people have worked so many hours, not just on campaigns, but for nonprofits, for volunteer giving in the community. One thing that has been a hallmark of my life is service. When I was first elected to city council, I kind of thought that I might only get four years, and I thought I should get busy, and I did. In that first four years, we opened up the ice skating rink again. We did Open Forum, which has been a tremendous success twice a year. I have been responsible for a lot of innovation. The Sustainable Resilient Longmont actually came out of our first sustainability fair, which is something I suggested. The other part is that we've had a hackathon. The first hackathon in Longmont brought together the tech community that had never been brought together for a civic purpose, and out of that grew Tupper Mill. When we talk about a candidate that has a track record of innovation and anything's done, that's Sarah Levison. I also have more experience than anybody else in the race, and with experience comes leverage. What's leverage? It's knowledge, it's relationships, it's reaching across the aisle. I also have forced myself every single day to be reflective and to be in rooms where I'm an unlikely person to be in. I'm a member of a Rotary Club, and my Rotary Club funds Title I schools. We also fund career and technical center scholarships. We're the only Rotary Club to devote ourselves to funding scholarships for those individuals who are going to be mechanics and work in the agriculture business. It is a passion of mine to serve the community, and I would really appreciate your vote for mayor of Longmont. The other thing that distinguishes me is that I don't have another job 40 hours a week. So when you want to meet with me at 10 o'clock on a Tuesday, I can meet with you at 10 o'clock on a Tuesday, unless I'm supposed to be in Denver for a meeting or somewhere else. I will meet with everybody and I listen to everybody. One of my fellow Rotarians, who's a Republican and a businessman, he, he told me he was having a conversation with another person, and they were like, nah, Sarah. He says, you know what? I don't always agree with what she says or her positions, but she always listens. I can depend on her to listen. So please give me a chance. Please vote for Sarah Levison for mayor.
That was the final segment, the final segment of the evening, and I would like to thank all the candidates for respecting the time and providing thoughtful and insightful answers and letting us know where you stand, so we have a much better appreciation. And for me personally, I want to say thank you. This is what democracy looks like. It's a wonderful time, and I've been drinking it up. Now, I want to hand it over to Marissa to formally wrap up and close the evening.
Thank you so much, Nicolette. Thank you, candidates, for stepping up to run and being with us tonight. Thank you, audience, so much for being part of such a great turnout for this evening. Our connection with all of you really inspires us to continue this good work. For all the issues you care about, LED is here to help facilitate education, awareness, and action, whether it is showing up at Public Invited to Be Heard after city council meetings or, every Tuesday, 9:00 at 7. Or creating advocacy groups and engaging grassroots volunteers, facilitating town halls, for instance. Again, ballots dropped this weekend and are due back to the clerk by November 4th at 7:00 PM. One ballot for envelope, be sure to place the vote there, I mean. Be sure to sign your envelope with a signature recognizable by the, recognizable by the clerk's office. In other words, one you've used before, don't get created with your signature. You likely received your blue book from the State Legislative Council and your taper notice from Boulder County. Please check out our 2025 election widget at our website at longmontdems.org, which leads you to all sorts of resources, including a PDF of the info sheets you received tonight to share with, with friends, and the VCTP's, Boulder County Democratic Party's online voter guide at boko-voto.org. Two announcements from Martha Mareno, who would say I was remiss if I did not remind you that there is a Colorado Community Health Alliance Vaccine Clinic Saturday, the 11th of Saturday, at the Longmont Public Library from 11:00 to 3:00 PM. Dia de los Muertos, Day of the Dead celebration, as you know, not only is the, is it the 25th anniversary, Longmont's Dia de Muertos celebration is the longest standing Day of the Dead celebration in Colorado. Two events for that, a family celebration, also on Saturday, the 11th, from 11:00 to 3:00 at Fourth and Kimark. Then on Saturday, November 1, a live performance spanning the cages in celebration of Dia de Muertos. Tickets are $20 bucks. That's the Longmont Museum. Also, not this, but the following Saturday, the largest No Kings Rally ever. Details are in our upcoming blast. There were 2,300 events registered nationwide as of the time I checked it earlier today. Finally, it's coming up on that time of year for LED. We, oh, one, one more thing. Maggie Alfonso is here. She's from the Outreach and Inclusion Team at, for the Boulder County Democratic Party, and she's got all of these amazing Know Your Rights cards. If you're curious about that, when you see raids on social media and all that kind of stuff, go back and talk to Maggie, ask some questions or whatever, grab a couple of these cards. It's, it's, it's really important work that they're doing. Thank you, Maggie, for being here. So finally, it's coming up on that time of year for LED. We won't have a meeting in November, because there's an election going on. Well, we're all going to be exhausted at that point, but preparing for our LED Annual Holiday Celebration and Business Meeting on December 13th. That's where we'll have Dylan Rankin, this amazing young man who's all about rent choice voting. He's going to present on that. We will also be electing board members for the coming year, and we're looking for new board members. If you're interested in serving on our board, first thing is email us. Remember our email address all the time, longmontarea-dems@gmail.com, and we'll connect you with a board member, they'll give you the scoop. And right now, board members, if you can stand up, if you want to grab a board member after the meeting and ask them questions, they'll also give you the scoop. So that's it. Thank you for being here. Stay strong.
Yeah, one last. Pete Salas. I'm, I'm Thursday, the 16th. It's the Triple Casoniada Alcomi Day fundraiser, and as you know, Alcomi Day is carrying extraordinary burden working with our immigrant communities. They deserve all the support that we can give them. So if you haven't bought, purchased tickets, you can go to Alcomi Day website, you can purchase tickets. It's important. If you can't attend, your donations would be more than welcome. Thank you.
The website is alcomi-dayinlongmont.com. So, okay, thank you. And Alcomi Day has been around since 1980?
Forty-five years.
Excellent. Wonderful. Thank you for being here, everybody.